I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, additions, changes to the agenda?
Tom Moyle, Tofro, second.
I got a motion by any juror, second by Maggie Bass to approve the agenda as outlined. So if there's no other questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, Bass is five zero. Next on the budget, or next on the budget, next on the agenda is, Mike's gonna give us a, since we do not have any people out here, except Mitch, and he's gonna do such a great job that it's gonna be on video exactly how this budget should work.
Do we need to have him give anything?
Well, we won't, Mike. He didn't wear a suit for nothing, come on now. No, go ahead. No, just give us a summary, you know, do a, well, I'd say Patty version, but if we were doing the Patty version, we'd be already on number three on the agenda.
I bet we do number three on the agenda.
All right, I'll try to, and you know this is next to impossible, but this is my favorite time of the year.
Oh, I know, it's killing you, but go ahead.
The staff does a great job in helping to put this together, that we will put the PowerPoint on the city's website so that residents can take a look at it and take their time and go through it if they want to follow tonight's meeting, so I'll try to get a few of the highlights. Generally, the primary purpose of tonight's meeting is to present the city's budget as it relates to those portions of the budget that have tax impact. Most city residents have received here recently from both Scott County or Massour County, the Truth of Taxation, property tax notice for the coming year, along with the change in value of their property for the coming year. So one of the things that I'd like to point out as we get started here right away is the city's preliminary property tax rate that showed up on the Truth of Taxation notice has actually been reduced as we come into tonight's meeting. That original levy was at $4.16 million, up a little over $169,000 or 4.2%. Currently, in the council's work in the budget, we've been able to reduce that down to $4,890,000, and so it's up only about $92,000 or 3.1% over the 2017 levy. That reduction of $77,210 predominantly, I think, was related to the preparation of our budget as it related to the estimates for the health insurance for 2018. Couple of other major notable items, the preliminary property tax capacity, our tax base for 2018 is up to about $6.69 million, slowly approaching $7 million, up $275,000 to 4.2% over 2017, and that represents the fifth consecutive year now that we've seen growth in our tax base. That growth over the last five years in the whole point was in 2013, is up 1.65 million or almost 33%. Prior to 2013, it was in a period of decline for about four years, from 2009 to 2013, and it was down 1.43 million or about 22%. So we've picked up and gained everything that we lost in those four years, and the projected tax base for 2018 is the highest that the city has ever had, at least from what we can see in history. The other notable piece, and this is, if I took you through it here, I'd only be on the first couple of pages with what I've given you, so I'm just trying to hit some of those notables and then I'll flip through some of the pictures. 2017, our current year, right now, is going down in history as the second busiest year for construction, with 173 residential equivalent units here in 2017 compared to 2003, which was the highest ever, ever, or the busiest, with 307 residential units. I'm sure glad I wasn't here, we think 173 units this year between single-family, town homes, and now the most recent, our senior affordable housing project, we're at 173, and 2003 was 200, or 307 residential equivalent units. Ken tells me that that was the year that everybody came in and picked up their, they wanted their building permits before those four hit because whack-a-sack charges were ramping up, so. Well, there's a couple of notable items before I move on to some pictures, is our LGA is up above 4% this year. Our property tax rate, looking forward, if the council adopts the budget as we are recommending, is we would see that go down slightly from 62.2% down to a little over 61. It would be the fifth year consecutively that the council has been able to lower the city's property tax rate, and a good share that as you, if you listen to the ups and downs of whether values are going down, likely tax rates are going up, if property values are going up, likely tax rates are going down, so that's the inverse relationship when you hear some of these things, that those two kind of go hand in hand. And like I said, the 3.1% was in the general, is the overall levy in the general fund, but the overall property tax increases proposed for 2018 is only up about 2.3%. If you look at the past seven years, I think the year you've been in office now, one more year, or this year, coming year '18 will be your eighth year, the seven years that you've been involved in the budget process, if we look back, and Sean's been involved in that, and David for a good share of that, is the average increase over those seven years is about 1.2%, and I look back coincidentally today, just trying to take a look at it for the last 10 years that I've been involved in the budget preparations, and over the last 10 years, the property tax increase has gone up on average about 2.3%. So I think the council's been pretty fiscally responsible in taking a look at what that's been over the years. In those early years, we had some healthier increases because we were losing the LGA, the market value home state credit, and some of those revenues, so the council chose to make up some of those. I'm not gonna go through all of the accomplishments, you can read about it, because we've got a couple of pages here, I'm gonna take you through some of the pictures, but in the spirit of time, unless you take a look at that, although it's very hard not to go through, and itemize on behalf of what the staff and the organization have done this past year, but I'll let people read through that, and you'll get a good idea, but, you know, it's been anything from the workforce to the housing project, to the meter replacement, to crime mapping, to the small cities program, to construction of new residential units, the indoor aquatics center, on and on and on, it's been a real busy year. This is just some of the friendly folks that we hired this year, and this one is one of the more internal issues for the year that externally, not everybody sees that, but we hired 11 employees this year, 11 positions out of 50 employees, which represents about 22% of the workforce. Those came from retirements, resignations, promotions, and the addition of one position. So I think you can read and see who are in our employees, these young guys are just out of high school the other day here. Our three newest, youngest police officers, I think Jim, aren't they?
Ah, they are our youngest.
They are our youngest. They had a photo on Friday night as part of the downtown parade, and so we roped them in to get a picture. First, a new industrial building, industrial park, started last year, was completed this year, and that's with Paul Hanzel Homes Inc. across the street. Glenn's not here, he's well up with a great deal of pride on the work that he and all the people that he's working with on our baseball field improvements for phases one, two, and three, all trying to get ready for the 2018 stadium, or baseball tournament, where we'll be hosting the class B and C teams here in the latter part of August and over the later week. So we're excited, kinda glad we're getting done to a certain degree, that it's been a lot of work over the last three years, but I think in the end, this should be quite a nice facility that the community and the baseball enthusiasts can be quite proud of. This project, primarily led by the school district for the most part, who participated in planning and various other aspects, and the council then did contribute financially, was on the new indoor aquatics facility that's spearheaded under a joint powers agreement between the city and the school, and I'm still amazed every time I see this, that I've been in a lot of communities over my career, been involved in construction of YMCA, ran a community center in community, and so have been involved in a lot of different facilities, and this one is also another facility jointly that the city and the school can be quite proud of. On the far end, it's kinda hard to see, as the ZF pool, the council added some funds into, along with the border referendum major pool that you can see here. This is a reflection from Ken on housing units here over 2012, probably should be 17, I think I missed one little, one little piece, shows a 216, the year date of 17, and 173, you can see that's quite a ramp up from where we've been here in recent years, as far as, we thought last year was a busy year at 53, well, we outpaced that, I think it was Ken what made, first part of June, just about.
Yep.
So, and then the last permit came in here right after Thanksgiving, our new 91 unit senior housing project, that, I'll have a picture for you in just a second, but this is south of Coburns with the East Island Estates Development, south of Coburns, and then here is a little bit of the startup, the construction on the senior housing project and a rendering of what this is likely to look like. Probably it's gonna take a good year of construction to get through and get this open, and it may be early 19, Ken?
Yeah, probably.
Before they formally open it up. And the other project we got started on a couple of years ago now, but it's in full planning mode speed and work between Mid-dots and city staff and the SEH engineers, is our 2020 downtown highway project that, as much as you look in the rearview mirror with some of the things that we've gone through that are behind this, looking ahead to 2020, it doesn't get any easier looking at down the road, that, you know, the thought of that one mile stretch that's gonna run from a four-way intersection of 19 and 2021, all the way east to Seventh Avenue southeast, that one mile stretch from building mall to building mall, all the way down with water, sanitary storm, electric, street lighting, curb and gutter, sidewalks, the whole kit and caboodle, that it'll be a war zone, hopefully we can plan it and phase it, and, you know, the committee that you appointed is meeting again here this month, and, you know, we'll be finishing up working with Mid-Dot Committee into the early part of 2018 on the preliminary design, and then having them bring in some recommendations to you, and then taking public input so that the engineers can begin starting working on the final design, so that that's completed in 19, and they can get out to bid with the goal and the hope of having bids in in the fall, early winter of 19 for construction starting in 2020. This is just some of our 2018 projects, goals and issues, again, kind of staff identified, not necessarily prioritized by the council, but I believe as you take a look through that, that I, I hope that it incorporates most of the discussion that we've had, and so it's just a general identification on the one page that we have in your packet, and so hopefully we've brought most of them to the table. Here's got an article that came out in GMA, he already did kind of a year-end review on the 17 accomplishments, so that was a little bit of publication, but I hope that we're able to get to a few more of these that we had here on the table with the document for 17, then we could get to an early 2018 and get them underway and completed and in the Total budgets at about $4.7 million here, revenues, a primary thing to point out in taking a look at this, is that between property taxes and local government aid, those two revenue sources comprise about 82% of the general fund revenues. So we're very tight on the two items, one that you locally control, the other one that's intergovernmental revenue from the state of Minnesota, but collectively, the piece in blue, which is the current and the delinquent taxes, along with about $856,000 out of the intergovernmental, are the two major revenue sources. LGA has continued to increase slightly in the last few years, which is exciting to see, don't know where it's going beyond this because we have heard from the legislature. Go back to this real quickly, though, I don't think that was there earlier, just take a quick look, Ken. Anyways, capital projects that, for 2018, so you can see the list that I can assure you was there, I looked at it earlier, this is special projects for the year, I'm sorry?
Out of the spirit, from Ohio.
Yeah, that's unbelievable, normally that doesn't happen, but I looked at it, he loaded it, so we won't have to blame that on the gremlins, but that'll be in the information. This is our special projects, the biggest one, is the annual seal for the first streets. Just a summary of the budget from '07 to 2018, generally ended the year in positive fashion, with the exception of a couple of years that we did some specific planning to buy a firetruck and write off the golf debt, and following this is the revenues, a trend in that, a trend in the expenditures, a balanced budget for this year. You can see generally blue is revenues over the red, actual, and as we do the budget planning, we try to make sure it's balanced, the two years that I noted, as I said, when we purchased the firetruck for cash, the aerial ladder firetruck, and then golf right off, the one for golf course, only two years in this trend that expenditures exceeded revenue. Debt service has historically been at about $1 million a year here in recent years, higher dollar amount total as far as with the bonds that are needed to be paid at about $2.256 million, but the only part of the levy that's needed is about $1 million. The other part of the levy picture is our new Prey Economic Development Authority budget, and then we've got a small levy of about $50,000 that is part of the overall revenue. We also tried to incorporate, put in some information in the packet for people to read for the Department of Revenue, a couple of sheets on trying to understand property taxes in Minnesota. If you think you know it, then you're ready to talk or hold on about it, read these couple of pages, and I guarantee you'll come away with a lot of questions as you take a look at it. Our property taxes determine, this is a formula that we put out there, that we generally take the proposed budget, back off all the non-property tax revenue to determine what we mean property tax-wise, then you've got the assessed market value, tax class rates gives us tax capacity or our tax base, and then we take the property tax revenue, divide it by the tax base, you get the property tax rate. Real quick and clean, here's the tax one, that tax capacity that I referenced earlier, and the growth that we've seen in the last five years versus the four-year decline up till 2013. This is a summary of the council's proposed property tax levy for 2018, which is at 2.3%. Most of all that is in the city's general fund, and not touching on the second, no increase in the debt service levy, no increase on the EDA budget. This is a picture that generally shows historically what has the council's percentage property tax changed been from the prior year, you can take a look at it, as I said, if you look at the last seven years from 2010 to 2017, that's been at about a 1.2%, but if you go back from 2008 forward, it's about a 2.3. The details are here in the general fund, a little bit of explanation as to what makes up that $92,003.1% increase in the general fund, I'll let people read that, no change in debt service, EDA, and the bottom line is reflective of the general fund. This is a new one we put together with a slightly different twist this time, and it's intended to be a simple one-page handout explaining to the residents, or anybody that is interested, is, you know, where is, when you spend a dollar, this is city property taxes, not county, not school, city property taxes, where the number of dollars that you spent, where is, what percentage of that dollar go in one direction? The first part, about 74 cents on the dollar goes to cover general fund, which is the general government services, public safety, public works, culture and recreation, unallocated and transferred, you can see what departments are included in each of those divisional categories, but that makes up about 74 cents. Only 5 cents on the dollar goes to debt service, paying principal interest on bonds, and a small piece on the end is the EDA levy, works out to about 1 cent, so it's a simple easy way to show anybody that has any interest of how are you spending your constituents' tax dollars, that in our show, we'll summarize that. The next one is the 10-year trend, the breakout, as I've looked to already, that over the last 10 years, the levies averaged about 2.3%. So I don't know if there's anything more to say about that one, it just gives you the specific breakdown, which is the front golf course, charted tax base, puts no longer debt service, EDA, and the formula in the library, so that's done. This piece shows what the tax rates have been for the city, county, school, and I think the graphic shows the picture, the city is the blue line at the top, we hit our highest tax levy back in 2013, and we have been able to, since then, to bring it down for five consecutive years, and at that point it was a 74.5%, and we're now down to this budget of about a 61.06. So we brought it down a fair amount, and when you take a look at it, the city is part of the city, county, school tax pie, as we're about 45% of total taxes we're gonna pay. But what is comparison, so what is the impact? I did do some checking, again, as we try to use throughout the budget process, in that if you use the estimated impact, using the average market value house here in New Prey, with no change in valuation from 17 to 18 under the current budget, you can see about a, almost 2% decrease, or about $20.52. To go beyond that, to probably answer questions, is, you know, I can answer questions specifically, but I can generically, I believe that is part of this, and so this is the easiest way that I can help show in your packet, and I'm not going through, but again, is why do your property taxes change from year to year? We've included a six-page handout from the League of Minnesota Cities, so that anybody that wants to can kind of thumb through that and make a look at that in their spare time. Last, next to last page that I have is additional information for homeowners and renters, that anybody that's eligible for a fee of the different state programs for property tax relief, either the home state credit refund, renters property tax refund, or the senior citizens to provide information on the state of Minnesota website under the Department of Revenue. With that, I wanna thank all the department heads, Patty, Ken, Glenn, Bruce, and Jim, bar chief Jeremy, Barb is not here tonight, but she made some interesting twists in terms of what has historically been a document that we've used over the last 10 years, and then of course, the senior accounting technician, so with that, I would open it up, if there's any questions, we're required under the public hearing process to enable the public to ask questions, I don't see anybody, but council, if you have any questions, in particular, we'll be happy to be answering.
Okay, very good job, Mike. Your staff should be recommended, again, a great package, I hope people have the opportunity to go to the website and actually look at it more in detail, and again, if they have any questions, they can contact anyone on the council, or they can contact city administrator Mike Johnson, who will get them answers on anything specific. As Mike said, there is no one out here right now, but if anyone would like to comment?
I just would point out that from tonight, the council will move forward with the levy adaption on December 18, and that'll be at 6 p.m.
Yep, thank you.
So we probably should close the public hearing before 8 p.m.
Okay, again, I'll give anyone an opportunity, if you would like to speak on behalf. Doesn't look like there's anyone out in the public here today, so I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusich, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, public hearing is closed. So now that that's closed now, anyone have any questions for Mike, or Patty, or Jim, or Ken on any budget items? I know we did a pretty, pretty good job of, during our workshops, to get any answers that were needed, so.
I'd like to make a comment, brief, I think, that I've been on this now for six years, and each year I have to start over because I don't truly understand this whole thing, and there was, if you look at, which I didn't have the opportunity to see before we started all this, about the last 16 pages of this document gives you an idea of how complex it is, and how much thought you have to put into it. There was also an article written by Gary Shelton, the Scott County Administrator, that came out in your Scott County Scene on the August, sorry, August and September issue of 2017. He did a very good job of explaining how our taxes are derived. Now, if you're like me, and the rest of the council probably could understand it by sipping through it, but not me, it took me about three times reading through it and going through it like I go through a physics text, to see how complex it is. It really is a study, if you will, in what is involved in computing taxes for each and every one of our households, so please take the time to try and understand it, it isn't easy.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, again, Mike, thank you very much for your summation there, I didn't know if you even took a breath on some of the areas, but we appreciate the effort again, I know you, this makes, this is Mike's proud moment every year with the help of his staff, so you should be proud, Mike, it's a very good package, so, good job, and looking forward to doing it all again next year, I guess.
He speaks for himself.
That's right, I understand this stuff, so it's.
Have questions, call Chuck.
That's why we tried to have some of the graphs and the information in there, that you could take a hand out, and try to simplify it as much as we could.
Yes, and I think the visuals do help a lot of people, so, okay. So again, you can go on to the website and see the, look at the PowerPoint presentation, and hopefully that will give you a little better picture of the budget process that we've gone through, and then the taxes that affect your checks, so. Okay, next on the agenda, Southwest Metro Drug Task Force.
Honorable mayor and city council members, tonight I'd just like you to entertain taking a look at a joint powers agreement with Southwest Metro Drug Task Force. We've been involved with them for, this would be the fourth year now, that we'd enter into. It is derived from the four counties in the metro, in the memo, indicating West Hennepin, Carver, Scott, and McLoughlin County. These commander and the four agents that work on it come from those departments that are able to offer people to the task force. We do not have personnel to bring to the task force, so we pay a yearly due regarding just being a member of that, and that helps to depraise some of the costs for those members that are committing people to it. I can indicate that I can indicate that the task force is constantly working in our area on generally felony drug level cases. They have been in our community the last couple months, looking at some dealers and trying to work up some leads regarding some arrests. We are also a member of La Sura County and Rice Task Force. They made an arrest here, end of December, early September, an arrest in which a male was manufacturing some methamphetamine, and they made that felony arrest here in town. We get a search warrant, and were able to take that party to jail, and ended up to have kind of an extensive cleanup for the apartment then, because some manufacturing was happening inside. But it is, it's a great opportunity for the city to share in this great resource, where we are able to share intelligence with the task force, with people that the department personnel come in contact with, and we pass that intelligence on to the task force, and our agent that is assigned to New Prague comes from the Scott County Chair's office, so he works hand in hand with us then, in those investigations. We've been paying the twenty-one hundred dollars yearly due, that's been coming out of the forfeiture funds right now. We would entertain this year for 2018 to continue that. The task force is overseen by the state auditor. They have individuals that are assigned to various task force, and they audit them, and part of that audit is to have a signed joint powers agreement for each year that we are going through this process anyways. And that's, that's why I constantly have to bring it back to the council, to remove the joint powers. Any questions at all?
Jim, is this force pretty effective in combating drugs?
Yeah, they're out there making arrests all the time. We continue to see the heroin, methamphetamine, some cocaine now is coming in. So yeah, they're always out there working. If, if we changed our strategy and dealt with chemical dependency, could that be a greater benefit to our community? Yeah, but we have not done that. We have not moved, as a society, we have not moved to that. But just because somebody is chemically addicted to a-chemical, that causes our issues with theft, burglary, robberies, all relate back to that. Some studies indicate eighty to ninety percent of those crimes come directly from people that are addicted to illicit drugs. So we keep doing what we can. This, this is something the city can do, that is very cost-effective for the benefits.
Thanks.
Jim, is there anything materially different with this joint powers agreement than last year's?
Uh, no, the only thing they added was, was a administrative assistant. Previous, previously, Jordan provided an administrative assistant that they built out, and the task force still paid for. But last year, we talked about, well, earlier this year, actually, we talked about Jordan possibly needing that person for their own use, and then it was decided that we would hire our own personal assist, our administrative assistant for the task force itself. So that language was put into the agreement then.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the joint powers agreement, so.
Second.
I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Amy Jurick. If there's no other comments, questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank the task force for their good work.
I will do that. Would you guys like a presentation from the agent sometime at a council meeting?
Yeah, I'd be very good. I know at the La Sura County meeting last year, we had the, the La Sura Rice, you know, some of those agents came and actually did a very nice presentation. Actually had samples of all the different drugs and all that stuff, and it was very informative, and I think that was well-received, so I think that would be very informative. Please smile a lot.
Samples?
We didn't get the sample.
On display.
On display, yes, they were in little jars, and you could look at them, okay.
They all went home.
That's right, yes. Okay, next on the agenda, this is, Ken, you're gonna take this, a grant?
I will. We have good news once again from the Scott County Community Development Agency. This time, we have been awarded a 2018 Core to Readiness Grant, and if the council will recall, we've actually been funded through this particular grant program four times previously, and those project grants in total were a little over eighty-one thousand dollars for those four, and those all related directly to the industrial parks. This time, we had to take a little bit different approach, because we did not have the industrial park, obviously, as an ongoing project that needed any studies or infrastructure to go in. And this time, we took a look at our sanitary sewer study distribution system, and we applied for the portion of the grant, basically, two-thirds be funded by the grant one-third locally matched for the hundred thirty thousand, six hundred dollar study for the sewer update. And again, we had, we had mentioned this before we applied, that that study was last updated in 2003, prior to the majority of our growth, and we just needed to get that study redone, and really help identify trunk sewer lines, either on the east side of town or west side of town. That might kind of give us the best bang for the buck, so to say, and/or identify other areas in the system by utilizing actual flow data in our infrastructure, where we might be able to actually provide more growth that the study may not have adequately addressed with theoretical spreadsheet analysis from the 2003 study. So this one would have actual flow data included in that. So, we did get awarded that two-thirds grant, eighty-seven thousand, sixty-seven dollars for that project. The one downside is we had also applied for funding to fund a water distribution system plan update, and that was last updated in 2005. They did not fund that portion of the study, and as noted in the memo, it was deemed too general based on the project not being specific to a site in an area where commercial industrial development can grow. Can't really argue that. Wasn't the case where with the sanitary sewer study, where we're really looking at targeting where that growth could go. Water, we can generally provide that anywhere within the city. We didn't have that, that same issue. We were just hoping to coordinate the two studies at the same time with the grant funding provided for them. So it's noted that staff and the Utilities Commission will readdress that water study issue in 2018. But can't be mad about eighty-seven thousand in grant funding for the sanitary sewer study, so we have an MOU similar to what we've entered into the past with the CDA for that grant funding, basically notes that we're gonna carry out the study as we proposed, and that we'll get it done within the year 2018, which will not be a problem. So we recommend approval of the MOU of Scott County CDA.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Ken? I did notice in the memo that Bruce was considering, was gonna talk to, obviously, the Utilities Commission to see if they're still interested in doing the water portion alone, or something, but.
Yeah, still a twelve-year-old plan, and probably worthwhile, but just, it deemed appropriate enough for this particular grant application, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Scott County.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Dave Brusich, second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five-zero.
Mayor, we'd like to point out that a large part of the success in that application is due to Ken's ongoing writing and planning skills and putting this together, so it's just good to have him doing his ongoing accountability of all of the grants that he's brought in in recent years. I gave up on it a long time ago, but he's still making progress on it, so he does a lot of good work on this.
We do appreciate it, Ken.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Mike, I'm kind of confused.
Disregard all the language in there, other than it closed as the meeting schedule. Disregard everything else.
I was gonna say, 'cause Monday is the second, and I'm like.
We're still going through a little bit of trials and tribulations, and memo preparation and that.
That's fine.
And prep preparation, but.
So there really is an issue then?
There is no issue at all. It just needs to be adopted by you, so we've only set meetings for coming here.
Right, so then, again, January, the first meeting will be that first, the second, which is the first Tuesday.
As well as the second meeting in January as well, because of.
Martin Luther King.
Yes.
Okay.
And then starting in February, the second meeting in February also reversed to a Tuesday.
We gotta clear all these holidays.
And then I think the only other one in the course of the year is out in September, which is the day.
Okay.
But hopefully that allows you to do your planning, you know, personal schedules, and have some idea what's coming, so, yes, disregard everything other than the first sentence.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, issues on this? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Next.
We did have our annual City Charter Commission meeting, and it was held in November sixteenth. City Attorney Riggs was there, and basically, as indicated in the council, if you take a look at the back pages of the memo, is that we have four commissioners whose terms are due to expire December thirty-first of this one. Maggie, Brad, and Kate have all served the entire term. Dwayne was appointed here earlier this year to fill part of a vacant term, and all four have indicated a willingness to continue serving if the council's interested in their reappointment. So you have the choice to take a look at recommending these four, or you can come up with other names. Depending on what you want to do, is we would need to get a resolution prepared at the next meeting, and if you wanted to move forward with these four, the earliest we could do it would be to have a resolution for Tuesday action at the January eighteenth meeting.
December eighteenth.
Excuse me, December eighteenth.
Okay.
I have a question, Mike.
Yes.
How can we have three council members on that commission, all meeting at the same time?
Well, because at the time, Maggie Bass was not an elected official at the time, and Scott said, as long as we're posting notice, we may have to go an extra step in just noting that we do have three council members, but it's up to the council if you want to choose to do that, but we'll take care of that through the postings. It meets once a year, so there's nothing that precludes it from occurring.
Well, except, then it's an open meeting law. It's a.
But so, this is posted as an open meeting as well, already advertised, just like we do council meetings, and Scott did, as we talked about this after the meeting, is we may go an extra step and post it, because we have three as a special council meeting as well. You said it's up to you as to whether you want everybody to continue, or whether you make modifications or changes.
Personally, I think we should probably not have three on the commission, but it's I think that there are other people that might be interested in serving on it, but I haven't queried anybody. But that's up to the rest of the council.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? I don't see much of an issue with it, personally, just as long as it's posted properly. A lot of the topics of the Charter Commission are really dealing with day-to-day operations of the city, or it's looking at the main platform of the city's constitution, so I didn't see any issue with that, so.
And I think Scott Riggs kind of made the same comment.
Okay, well, we can decide to bring any additional names that can be presented to the council at the next meeting, or we can decide to move forward.
I'll make a motion, have you move forward with the four that have already indicated that they'd like to be on the council, or on the Charter Commission.
Okay, I got a motion, I guess I'll make a second. So Sean Ryan made the motion, Chuck McLoughlin made the second. Any other further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five-zero.
So we'll bring the resolution here December eighteenth.
Please do. Scott will be shocked, yes, Scott will be shocked that we've got it done already. Okay, next, Ken, are you gonna take this?
The city staff recently had a request from the City of Belt Plain. Council wasn't aware, most likely were not, the City of Belt Plain has been in the process of hiring a building official. They had a staff building official, and he had left for other employment, and they were seeking to hire another new building official, and with a particular candidate they have in mind, they had approached us to inquire about, basically entering into what was titled a mentorship agreement with the City of New Prague, to utilize our building official, Chad Lunders' experience and knowledge in the codes, and will eventually help Belt Plain in securing a municipal delegation agreement from the Department of Labor and Industry. Currently, what we have for ourselves as the City of New Prague, and that was approved by the council back in April of 2015, is a municipal delegation agreement, known as a reserved inspection delegation. It's not the really large projects, such as the indoor pool, or the additions to the schools, but we do get a lot of the hospital projects, the renovations, and internal remodeling for the public, and institutional buildings that the state would normally take. So Belt Plain Plains is trying to have their new building official gain some knowledge in that process, and hold those internally similar to what we do. The agreement would provide for up to three hours per week, that's inclusive of drive time to Belt Plain, should we travel there, or their building official could travel to our office for these weekly meetings. The suggested rate is seventy-five dollars an hour, that's basically nearly twenty-four dollars an hour, over and above the wages and benefits for our building official position. That nets us above twenty-five hundred dollars in additional revenue for those one hundred and forty-four hours for the year of 2018. So not a huge financial windfall for us, and obviously not trying to fleece a neighboring city either, but if you look at the agreement, we do have a provision specific to their new building official in Belt Plain has experience with rental housing inspection programs, and this agreement provides at no cost to New Prague, up to two hours per month of assistance in the development of that program here in New Prague that we have talked about implementing in 2018. This individual that Belt Plain is hiring has considerable experience in the rental housing inspection program, actual field inspections, and administration of the code, so we think it's actually pretty valuable to have that knowledge and assistance, somewhat in exchange for the mentorship on the building portion that this agreement covers, so. So we think it's pretty beneficial to both us for the rental housing and to them in getting their building officials some experience moving forward. So we do know, obviously we've talked about this many times, we have a very busy 2018 lined up with about three days a week for inspection time on this senior housing project. We are able to provide this with no reduction in services to the residents. Again, we have another building inspector that was added, that says 2018, was added in 2017, I should have corrected that. And then the information and research we can get from Belle Plaine and their new building official will actually save us quite a bit of time on the front end in developing our program and developing that ordinance to bring forward hopefully sooner than later in 2018, and then obviously to work on refining the program itself. So a little backer than the agreement itself, so city attorney Scott Riggs worked on this agreement with city attorney Bob Bows at Belle Plaine's expense. They both work for Kennedy and Graves, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. But we believe this agreement provides a mutual benefit to both parties, more so for ourselves in the end, and my view of this, just from what we're getting out of it, both monetary-wise and then the experience with the housing inspections, but also provides a good collaboration with the neighboring community. I would hope if we're in a position at some point in the future, should we need a similar agreement, should our building official and staff ever need that assistance, I think it would be, it's a good thing to do and provide that so we can help each other out.
So have they hired the new person or anything?
They will not make that offer formally. It's basically contingent upon this being approved.
Oh, okay.
So...
So if this is approved and they offer it and that person doesn't take it, does this, obviously is no...
We would discuss if we want to continue with that at this time.
Right.
Because there's obvious benefit for this particular individual with the housing inspection experience that we have.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for Ken?
I'll make a motion that we approve the mentorship with the city of Belle Plaine.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Dave Brusich, second by Maggie Bass. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, good, thank you.
Ken?
Yep.
Page three, under insurance, you've got an extra shell in there, just read that line, the last sentence over. Under insurance.
Shall each shell carry?
Yeah.
Correct that, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or anything on any items in the consent agenda?
I do on the first set of minutes. It's on page 950, which would be, I think, the last page.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, again, on the minutes, there's a, I think an omission on the second sentence of the, yeah, second line. The next step is start, is to start forming up the new wall, but also it says something about there are other needs that need to happen before and after the November 17th completion date. I'm wondering, and I see Glenn isn't here, but whether Ken or Mike might know, is there anything else that can be done before the beginning of the year that...
Oh yeah, that we haven't stopped that we engaged the city attorney's office with the contractor and the engineering consultant. We have put the bond, their bond company on notice, and so we've taken all of the appropriate actions that we can under the contract at this point, and we believe we have gotten his attention to the degree that hopefully we'll get as much closed out as we can subject to what we might have to wait till spring, with the idea that everything on the field side is playable from that perspective, we can still pour concrete on the other side if we have to, but we've got this tension.
Good. Well, I think I can attest to that just by driving by it, there's definitely a lot more activity over there the last couple of weeks. The new wall went up fairly quick, and so there is definitely things moving along.
Well, the challenge that you have is that you have a starting date and ending date. This isn't a penalty contract, late contract, but we put him on notice in that the choice is either to terminate the contract and go after the bonding company for the money, or to hopefully have him marshal the forces needing to do the work. And so our latter would be the preference, and so we're seeing what that's going to be versus if we have to take any other action, but we've got Scott Riggs involved before we reach the completion date on the 17th, and he and our engineer and staff have been working on trying to put that together with the contractor.
Thank you.
Ken, anything else?
So David, it was just the minutes there, just reading up the top there.
Yes.
The word two should be added, and that's the thing that's clarified. Anyone else have any questions or concern on anything in the consent agenda?
Couple in the opening, so there's one to inquire about.
Okay.
Under the attorney fees, it just says Kennedy and Graves, legal matters, it was almost $6,000. Is that, was that any particular one issue that seemed kind of high? Do you recall what?
I don't, I can't answer that. I can certainly give a summary here, but I just don't have the bills here with me to answer that question, but I know historically we've been the latter half of the year with the plus attorney fees that we've reached that, just because of the amount of projects and the interaction. So I had to go back and just double check that to answer your question, which I certainly can't.
Okay. Another thing I noticed in the street department, there was a wheelbarrow charge, US bank credit card for $214 for a wheelbarrow, does that sound right? It just seemed hiding, I don't know if anybody else, it seems out of the ordinary, but I'm just kind of curious if they're shopping around, or if they're just having it delivered, or if they're...
No, our guys are pretty good at trying to take a look at that, and so I won't attempt to guess to me, but I will take a look at that, and I can certainly provide clarifying information to double check that price and why it is what it is versus if it's something different than a normal wheelbarrow or something.
Okay, I guess I haven't purchased one myself, it just seems $214, it seemed like a big expense, but the other one under the works department, trees plus, moving trees, I was kind of curious, was that $1,200, $1,250? Where was, where were the trees moved?
I was just kind of here for the golf course. We moved a number of trees from the golf course up to the public works department up on the hill. Whether that's exactly the issue with trees plus, again, I'd have to...
Yeah, we had to take them out of the nursery there?
Yeah, they had to say that they were too compact in there.
They were getting too big, if we didn't move them, you couldn't have moved them.
Oh.
So I know that they cleaned it right by the 14th green there, there's that, there was that nursery that, oh, every green there, yeah.
Okay, I was just kind of curious. And then the quality under the enterprise sanitary sewer, the quality flow systems, the controller for the SCADA, SCADA?
SCADA?
SCADA, $23,000. What is that exactly? And was that part of the, still the ongoing, any issue with the fire that was there, or the...
Let me track reach on $23,000 on the controller for the SCADA system.
SCADA, isn't that the information system?
I was just working on the updates and upgrades, I believe.
Yeah, that we're gonna do the inner, or the fiber optic to the water pumps, am I right?
No, this is, this is under sanitary sewer.
Yeah, but wasn't that the whole SCADA?
Yeah, the whole system.
The whole system. And I don't know what the, if this is...
Interesting, but it just stuck out, I was kind of curious.
I'll begin with...
Maybe that it was discussed at the utilities and...
We don't talk about the sanitary...
Oh, you don't, this is... If Glenn was here...
But I know we talked about the SCADA system on the other side.
Okay.
So I know they're working on it.
I will check all four of them in front of a quiet response. Okay.
I have one more question, too. I think I know the answer, but I just want to verify. The, on the page three, the Fund 207 reimbursement, is that reimbursing the businesses when the project's complete, or is that reimbursing the partnership? Is that for a complete project? You know how we have the funds and then we...
Excuse me, this should have been SCBA reimbursement number two. It would be the second items in for the downtown program. It's not, it's not reimbursement, it's the...
It's part of, it's going to a business owner, it's part of their reimbursement for what, the match, right?
Well, the housing partnership, if you remember, that they handle the whole project. They get the funds from the property owner, and then they get the funds from the city to pay off the costs of doing the rehab, and then we formally set up the agreements where we have claims against them, that part of it's the no interest loan forgivable after five years. There's a ten-year, 2% loan, and then they have to put in 20%, so this would be...
So we're just paying for the projects what they need?
That's correct.
All right, that's what I thought. It was my turn.
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I had one also on the, I know we talked about it last time, Mike, on the historical society permit and the event on the 8th and 9th.
Yes.
And it, so it looks like there was some change.
Well, it was more of a clarification than anything that...
Requested a change.
Well, no, technically if you read the letter, that the letter was a little bit incomplete in the conveyance of the message to the city staff. If you look at the hours of operation per the letter, the very back page, it talks about 12 to 8:00 p.m. on Friday and 9 to 4:00 on Saturday. I underline, we're also working with food vendors and all the musicians who will provide entertainment during the event on both Friday and Saturday evenings. When they came and I explained what the three conditions of the license were, that wasn't what we meant, we were fighting to go into the evening, and I said, well, that wasn't what got approved. And so through clarification, Jim, I did not get a chance to touch base with our president of the historical society. They indicated to me that they had really done this last year, they used the same letter, and I said, well, if that's the case, I wasn't aware of it last year, and so we need to get clarification from the council to modify technically the event hours. The license allows them to, the insurance is in place, this wasn't part of the list of hours that were identified, but essentially what they wanted to do is to, whether they will or not, is to go till 11:59 p.m. on all of the evenings, depending upon how the activity turns out.
Okay.
So that was the reason to put it back on for your review and consideration and clarification, because it wasn't what was approved in the three conditions.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mike getting some information for Sean on some of those payables.
Second.
Got a second by Sean Ryan. Any other questions or comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Miscellaneous, Patrick, you have anything?
Well, I don't know how you went to the parade of lights last Friday, but I was there, it was warm weather, they had quite a large crowd, turnout.
Good. It's good to do this weekend, or last weekend, not this week, so. Mitch, you got anything? Good? James?
I have nothing.
Ken?
Uh, nope.
Mike?
We're waiting to hear from Mark Alphobom, the possibility that it was either late this week, depending on how it works, or probably the first of next week before he has a groundbreaking for the senior housing project.
I think they broke a lot of ground already.
They have, but formerly with the construction hard hats and the golden shovels, so to speak, that Mark and I both believe it's important that with all the work that the council invested in this project, and he on behalf of the Mercado group, and then either the EDA or Chamber, for those that want to be involved, is that he probably have a short groundbreaking at the site, and then a follow-up event probably at the golf course, just to get together after the groundbreaking. So he hasn't given me an exact date as of yet, but that is going to try to be scheduled. And I said, you know, we've been trying to get this done before the ground's frozen, that, you know, there may not be a whole lot to shovel out of the ground if it gets frozen here real quick, but we're trying to put that together. And so you see that they've come on site, they closed the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and we're here on Monday of last week, and they've just gone gangbusters. And as I talk to various elderly people, it's the talk of the town, and it's the most exciting daily activity to go sit in the parking lot of either McDonald's or across the street, and there's going to be hours of watching capabilities. Hopefully that'll prove next spring when it gets a little warmer, but senior citizens now end up with a good day-to-day activity to go watch that. Other than that, I don't believe I have anything else other than it's just nice to kind of finally get the budget process to closure here, and, you know, get the year in here and hold on some of the last remaining projects, and then we can handle first of the year.
Okay, good. Sean, you have anything?
I do, I have one thing that I cut out of the paper last week, a few days ago, involving the city of Eagan and the city council issue that had come up over a solar array that was put on a city lot, and I just wanted to ask Ken if, I know this popped up a few years ago with the city of Orno, I brought it up then. That was a two or three-story wind turbine tower that a lot of the neighbors had a problem with. I just wanted to bring this up, I was going to give you this article, I don't know if you saw it in the Star Tribune.
I did not, no.
But obviously, so the city might be out in front of these things and have some type of formula or formal plan for anybody who might want to put in. This one happened to be a little bigger of a property, it was like a little over three acres, but you could still see somebody maybe trying to put...
Something out in the yard?
Yeah, it was a 12, 12 by 60, 12 feet high and 12 feet long, or 12 feet wide, 60 feet long, a solar array in their backyard, and obviously neighbors could see it, and they weren't too happy about it. I just want to, is that a possibility?
We don't, we don't allow them currently, we don't, we don't list them, so it's not permitted because it's not listed in our ordinance. The only thing that is okay is solar panels that are integrally part of a roof.
Yeah.
And obviously it has to be engineered to support that load, but anything other than that, no, that standalone panel, it's not allowed right now, whether it be a panel or a turbine, you know, kind of egg meter looking turbine thing. Something we could do if you want to go that route, but we don't...
No, I think, I just want to make sure that it doesn't pop up like our Big Red Barn or something else that upsets neighbors.
Right.
And we find that we're behind the eight ball, we don't have any regulation or anything stating that, once they start it, we can't stop it.
We don't say they're permitted, so they're not permitted at this point. We, a few years ago, we had the Minnesota Solar Energy Challenge, I forget what the exact name was, but they did an audit of our ordinance, and we identified things we could add if we want to allow them, but as long as we don't, they're not, they're not permitted.
Okay.
Can I add to your comment?
Sure.
For the public to know that we belong to Simba, Southern Minnesota municipal power, and that we are, the city does invest in solar property, so even though residents won't have a solar panel, they are, as members of the utility, invested in solar.
We've also had conversations with Bruce, as he told the general manager that if people really want to make an investment in that, they can contribute, and it's somehow buying into Simba to get solar capabilities without putting it in a roof.
Or in their backyard.
Yeah.
Right. Which is great, I'm not against solar, I'm just saying I didn't, you could see where that could create problems. They have some issues that have popped up in the past, so. That was it.
Anything else? David? Maggie?
No.
Amy?
I just want to give the council an update. On November 28th, there was a orderly annexation board where we met with Scott County and Alina Township. Mr. Meyer from the planning commission was also there. We were the two representatives from New Prague, and it was about rezoning on a property that goes alongside Allen Avenue. that goes alongside Allen Avenue. We approved that with easement, pending an easement granted. There were some issues there with flooding and the road being underwater from beaver dams, so hopefully. Helena Township also asked if we'd be willing to assist them if they would need. I said, I can't do anything about that, but we can certainly have discussions, so I'm just bringing it to the council's attention.
Why, do they want some dynamite or something?
(laughing) Shh. They, what, they say 12 beavers, they found out that area. So.
Okay. Amy?
Just to give you that update on that, on that meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. I do not have anything, so I guess we'll see everyone in a couple weeks. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a second by Dave Brusich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're out of here, thank you, everyone.